Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending the second Town Hall in the Westwood. My name is Bob Pickett, and I'm a resident of Orange, but I'm also a radio broadcaster right now, a radio station from the BLS out of New York, formerly also with the archives, also known as K77. And I'm delighted to be here this evening to host the Town Hall. This is an opportunity for all of you, and I say that cautiously for those of you who have come out to break the weather, we say thank you very much. This is critically important. As you can probably guess, there was an option to cancel this Town Hall, but the mayor and the board stays functioning and stays focused on the administration. We have been in office since July 1st of this year, and there are a lot of exciting things happening. We've gone into City Hall, we've had the right-sized government, we've put people in place that have the expertise. I poured over long and hard all the decisions to create an administration, and I present to you a group of people who are experienced, professional, and they want to run our city like a business that it is. This is a $33 million social service organization. We deliver services to billions of people and want to run efficiently. We do it on taxpayer dollars, understanding that they're limited, and we try to do the best that we can with the little resources that we have. With that said, I bring this from my left, all the way to my right, to introduce themselves and to give a scenario of what they have been doing since they have gotten into office. I hope that information will inform your questions. I hope that you will come with questions and suggestions that help us to move Orange forward. This is a participatory democracy. We want to encourage that. And lastly, I, as the mayor, am open to a policy. You call my secretary, give her time that we can meet, and you come into office and discuss whatever you like in the next office. So with that said, we're going to start. Okay. All right, let's start with Carl Smith. He is the tax collector, been around a long time, and he's the one that makes sure the city is properly funded. Mr. Smith? I'm trying to get a microphone for you. Carl Smith, good evening everybody for coming out tonight. My name is Carl Smith, I'm the tax collector for the City of Orange Township. Some of our highlights that we've done so far for this year is we've increased our proxy percentage from 87% to 91.20% with one month to go. We also have an amnesty program in effect that took place beginning as of November 22nd this year. What that means is that if you have any good taxes or lender of water sewer charges, you can pay without interest provided you're in all these charges up to date. We will not charge you any interest at all. We also assist seniors with their property tax reimbursement applications. We also assist them with the senior donation applications. We also, for the first time, we're doing the signing of bulk tax sales certificates that we're not accepting bids for. Thank you. All right, and next is Chris Mokel, and Chris is with the water parking layers of, Chris?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Pickett said, my name is Chris Mokel, and I am responsible for coordinating activities within the parking and the water. One of the things that we've done recently is conductive assessment of parking in Orange, and we've identified a number of issues and challenges and opportunities. Some of the issues concern how we move people in the downtown corridor, how we provide parking for shoppers, residents, and business owners, and how we can improve the efficiency of parking. Some of the challenges that we've identified is the fact that revenue to the city that's derived from parking is significantly low compared to other municipalities of a life size. We believe that there are ways that we can improve that revenue and enhance the parking opportunity and experience for all of those folks who are stakeholders in Orange. We have a number of parking lots that are not fully humanized. The other challenge is that we have business owners and their employees who are parking on Main Street, and we believe that that parking should really be considered premium parking for shoppers. So we're looking at ways to make it better for business owners and their employees to perhaps park in our parking lots and reduce rate while we're opening up parking spaces for shoppers. We think that at the end of the day, with some other changes bringing new leaders to the city and increasing the parking enforcement, that it's going to move people along a lot better and at the end of the day, increase revenue to the city. We believe that we could be looking at anywhere between $500,000 compared to the $70,000 that the city is receiving currently from our parking operations. So it's an exciting time here in Orange. I'm glad to be a part of it, and I just want to say thank you very much, and please stay tuned.
All right, thank you very much, Chris. Next, we have Wendy Sykes. She's Director of Community Services. Wendy?
Hi, I'm actually Adrian.
Oh, I apologize. They had you down, it's Wendy. I apologize.
My name is Adrian. I am the Deputy Director of Community Services. Some of my duties are to direct the Recreation Department, the Department or the Division of Over-Adults, as well as Community Affairs. With Community Affairs, what, something that we've done that I am very proud of, we were able to have three festivals going in the city without a hitch in one day. We had a Caribbean Festival with about 2,500 people present, and the Town Hall Festival with a couple of hundred people present, and also the Mayor's First Soccer Club. And we had pretty good turnout for all of those things. Some things that we've done since we've come into offices, we were able to look at all the programs, all the recreational programs that we have in the Recreation Department, with the goals that the programs are well-supervised, that the programs are good activities, and something that's most important, that the programs supplement the school board. We've also collaborated with a number of people that I'm proud to say, we have collaborated with the Police Department, the Fire Department, also the School Board, a couple of nonprofits in the city, and some area churches. I want to say thank you for coming out tonight.
Adrian, thank you very much. I do apologize. Mr. Dowd, if you will allow me to alter the sequence, let's go with Wendy, since we've touched on the Community Service. Wendy, Sykes, I apologize, Wendy, can you do as well?
That's okay. Good evening. My name is Wendy Sykes. I'm the Director of Community Services. I oversee your vital Statistics Division, Division that handles your marriage certificates, your birth certificates, and your death certificates. I also oversee Animal Control Division and your health clinics for the children, for immunization shots, for the adults, immunization shots, and TB shots. Some of the things that have been implemented since the administration has come into office are we have implemented a task force, Inspection Task Force. The Inspection Task Force is designed to encourage code compliance and provide comprehensive code inspections throughout the city. We focus on chronic abandonment of buildings to go after immediate code violations. One of the goals of the Inspection Task Force is to enhance the environment of the City of Orange. We do want to focus on serious injuries when we do focus on serious drug areas and buildings with chronic code violations. One of the other things that have been implemented and piloted is a wellness program for the employees of the City of Orange. We partnered with Healthy Family Adventures and Indian Families with a wellness center in Orange. The goal there is to help improve the health and wellbeing of our Orange staff, our city staff, in an effort to help serve the community and decrease healthcare costs. I've also submitted a claim into FEMA for purchase of several generators for emergency power at some of our senior centers, which found out via Hurricane Sandy is a necessity. We are collaborating with physicians and nurses from Beth Israel Hospital to provide access points for seniors in senior housing buildings throughout the city for medical treatment and follow-up services. So we actually have physicians that come out from Beth Israel Hospital to have a site or a clinic to assist seniors, whoever would like medical care, and or follow-up treatment, with those physicians. This way, it limits the travel that they have to, you know, it eliminates the travel that they would have to do should they go outside of the building. We also collaborate with East Orange Department of Health for the HIV testing and counseling. This program we've just implemented, it's a grant from the New Jersey Department of Health and Senior Services. So I'm asking that it's very private. We do follow HIPAA laws. So I'm asking that anyone who's interested in HIV testing and or counseling services, please come to one of our clinics or call to find out the hours at the 973-266-4080 number. We've implemented an emergency management database for seniors and disabled residents, seniors over 60 and disabled residents. This is as a result of Hurricane Sandy. So what we wanted to do is have a database of all of our seniors. We know where our seniors are in the senior centers. We are now developing a database for our at-large seniors or our seniors that live in private housing or apartment buildings that are not considered senior housing, so that we know where you are and what some of your healthcare needs are and/or health equipment needs are, should power go out, or should we have another emergency or hurricane. So what we've done is, I actually have Mr., our Health Officer, Mr. Vincent D. Filippo, who just raised your hand, Vinnie, the audience who is prepared to, if you're interested in signing up and being on the database, if you're 60 or older and/or disabled, or if you have someone in your household who is 60 and older or disabled, please sign up with Vincent so that we can get your information and become aware of who you are should we have an emergency. We can contact you before and after the emergency. Last but not least, I just want to make a public service announcement regarding, again, Hurricane Sandy. We know that FEMA has disasterassistance.com where you can go to follow any claims that you might have for your housing or any damage that was done to your personal property. The State, the State of New Jersey Department of Community Services has now announced the SNAP program. SNAP program is the food stamp program. D-SNP is Disaster Food Stamp Program, which they implement during times of disaster. Program, and you can qualify and apply for it even if you do not normally receive food stamps. There are some qualifications. You have to go to the website. We have handouts in the back. It's, you know, big letters, words on it that says news. You might want to grab some. That has all the information on there, has the website, has who might qualify, and where to apply on it. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Wendy Sykes, thank you very much. And then next, go to Michael Dowd, who's Director of Fire. Michael?
Thank you. My name is Michael Dowd. I'm the Fire Director of the Orange Fire Department. Personally, we are working on a few programs. One is called the First Responded Program. Our action companies respond with the ambulance. Prior to this, we responded only when they called us or when we know ambulance is available. Now we're purchasing additional equipment and additional training for our firefighters to assist the ambulance, either before they get there. Sometimes they've died up on other calls, and this way, it was a fancy response to an emergency medical scene. Another thing we're working on is the, what's called the REMS Regional Fire Dispatch System. The fire department is dispatched by a regional center out of the University Hospital in Newark. We are upgrading our CAD system, our computer system, to get more improved work rating and information for our, for the National Fire Data System. The program we're working on, we have a few officers who volunteered for the Fire Explorer Program. This is something like a Boy Scout or Girl Scout system, taking youngsters into township, and giving them a little experience of what the fire service is like, if they'd be interested in a career in the fire service. And we hope to have that started sometime around February, March. And next is the OEM. When it came in, OEM is really a part-time basis. At the moment, it still is, but we put a person in there that is Mr. John Wade, who's highly qualified, has done an excellent job. And basically, we had a snow emergency training before Sandy. He had a meeting, and we just changed the name from Snow Emergency to the Sandy Storm. And I was in the conference with the Business Administrator, and we were contacted by FEMA and given high regards to our response and how we handled the emergency. They had a checklist, and everything that was required was done by our OEM Director, and we had less problems in our city compared to other cities than in county or state. And last, I would like to report that the Washington Street Firehouse, due to the economic conditions of the city, forced a rotational closing. I'm happy to report this Saturday, December 1st, that we will be opening the firehouse on a full-time basis, and that will maintain that opening for the foreseeable future, due to the fact that we were able to save a lot of money through overtime reductions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd, very much, Michael. Speaking of the Office of Emergency Management, and as Director Dowd indicated, Orange responded very, very well to Hurricane Sandy. The gentleman who heads up that office is here, and let us introduce him to you, Mr. John Wade. Mr. Wade, thank you for your efforts during Sandy. We do appreciate it very much. And now, ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to introduce Keith Royser. He's Deputy Director of Communications and IT.
Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for coming out. My name is Keith Royser. I'm Deputy Director of Communication and Information Technology, and I have 20 years' experience in the public transportation sector, margin communications. Personally, it's my responsibility to be particularly the voice of the administration across web, broadcast, social media, as well as print. One of the things I'm particularly proud of is the way in which we responded to Hurricane Sandy, where we were able to, we used the reverse 911 system, through print, through public service announcements, through on Channel 35, as well as web broadcasts. We were able to alert our communities as to what was going on quickly, supplying as much information as we had to make sure everyone was safe and well-informed. That was a major accomplishment of the administration. Like I said, we go, my responsibility is pretty much to supply news and information to this township of Orange through social media, through print, through web, through broadcast. One of the other accomplishments we're pretty proud of is the fact that we could use social media such as Facebook and YouTube to reach out to everyone with internet access, and able to give the news and information, highlights of certain events which happened over the summer and through fall, to let people know that in the interest of transparency and accuracy, the administration is living up to this mantra of moving Orange forward.
All right, thank you very much, Keith. Appreciate it very much. Let's go now to a very important person holding a very important job, keeping us all safe. Ladies and gentlemen, Hakeem Sin, Director of Public Safety/Policeman.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening for the yellows. At the beginning of this administration, the mayor came to me, he said, you know, this is the most important thing on my mind, he said, crime suppression and the safety of the residents of the city. So with that, we took an approach to begin programs, reinstitute programs, and increase the technology to help the amendment of the Orange Police Department and fight crime to the best of our ability. Some of the things that we've done, we instituted cameras throughout the city. We have them, and should be going up within a month. That will help us identify certain areas that deserve more attention. We have mended fractured relationships with outside entities, law enforcement agencies, federal, county, state, and local. We are now currently revamping our records management system so that we bear with secure information for the general public and to the assisting members of the police department in completing criminal cases. Additionally, some of our techniques have changed. I've spoken of parking lots and direct controls, where the parking lots will have the officer not only pull up on a certain location, but actually get out of the vehicle, meet the residents, meet the business owners, and become part of the community. This is not making us them approach the law enforcement. This is one city, and we are part of the city. So we want to welcome all people in the city to speak to any officer that you see in the street, because they both have a vehicle, they both have a handle and equipment. Additionally, with some of our neighboring cities, border controls, I have a meeting scheduled with each Orange to speak with the Chief and others, and I'm there to help secure our borders so that there won't be any passing criminals from one city to another. Those that are in Orange who will address enemy, hopefully they will leave Orange, and if you're in Orange, will not feel comfortable by coming to the city. Additionally, we also have reached a new community service bureau, or Community Service Division, excuse me. We didn't have one in previous, recent previous groups, but we have one now. The Community Service Division is responsible to any resident in the city, any emergency in the city. If you need site service, security service, if you're a resident in the community that wants a crime prevention, you'll be directed to that division, and the officers in that division will assist you in those endeavors. We welcome the whole people. If you have any questions, please come to the Orange Police Department, and we will help you the best we can. If we cannot help you, we will definitely find a way to help or direct you to the service that you're best able to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. We do appreciate it very much. Let's go now to the Deputy Business Administrator, Willis Edwards, the third.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And to those viewers at home, firstly acknowledge the presence of Councilman Hassan Dura Sheehan, who's the Westwood Councilman, who's also in the audience with us this evening. And I also enlisted Councilman Elway Orger, who's also with us this evening, and I also mentioned him for his presence. And I'm going to talk about those, but I want to kind of hit on initially, when I was interviewed by the mayor, who was positioned to serve the capacity of the administration for the city, the mayor came to me with one strong mandate, is to restore the City of Orange back to fiscal sovereignty through strong managerial day-to-day operations oversight. With that, we have started looking at non-traditional ways of increasing revenue for the City of Orange that do not include increased taxes. The mayor was very concerned about the over-tax burden that residents are currently enduring, and also the lack of services. To that point, we started doing something that you'll hear more and more about as we continue to move the City of Orange forward, and that is the term right-sizeing city government. Some of the things that we have started to focus on is the elimination of multiple departments, the consolidation of the Department of Public Works, and the Department of Planning to one department, having one director of that department. The decentralization, the Department of Community Services, to where we have, we're in compliance with other municipalities, where there's a Community and Health Services Division that deals with vital areas such as birth and health, and all of our healthcare needs. Another department deals, focuses on issue level to our seniors and our Recreation Department, so that we can go out to the county, to the state, to the federal government, and capitalize on the dollars that we have been missing out over the years. We talked about restructuring. We've eliminated the engineering director's position. For a municipality our size, we pay in excess of $100,000 a year for an engineer, when in other municipalities with the same number of staff of residents, they pay only a fraction of that by using an outside consultant. So in some cases, we will utilize outside services, but in other cases, we'll bring those services in-house. One of the first things we did was we eliminated a contract that was costing residents of Orange 2011 alone roughly $750,000. By bringing that service in-house, we were able to reduce that fee by roughly $500,000 to $600,000 by offering that service in-house. The earlier comments that you heard from Chris Mokel of us paying special attention to our parking situation, the parking authority, you'll hear us talking more and more, working in collaboration with our council members. The necessity for us to establish a parking authority so that we can realize the benefits of collecting revenue and the establishment of a parking liaison, so that we can establish a Midtown Direct at Highland Avenue, increase revenue, increase that area, and also the areas that are surrounded by it. There are so many other things that I'm just so excited about that we are working on, but I'm going to leave that to many of you who may have some questions for the administration, and so to pass the mic now on to my colleague.
Thank you, Willis, very much for those comments. And now, ladies and gentlemen, let's hear from Matthew Rolal. He's the taxing.
Taxation.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My position is actually a very unique position. Statutorily, I serve under the guidelines of the State Division of Taxation and under supervision of the Essex County Board of Taxation. However, I serve the mayor and the council and all the taxpayers in the city. Since I started, actually just before this administration in May of this year, I've dealt with 500 tax appeals in a professional and courteous manner, give everybody their say, best of our ability with my assistant. We've also been working proactively to get property revaluation going. For 2014 tax year, I regularly have to attend monthly meetings with Essex County to make sure we're moving the process along, and to, the main idea of the process is to fairly and effectively assess everyone, so everybody's paying their fair share. Our office, since I've started, we're always open to questions. My assistant is very well at handling them as well, and we're, you know, I need questions that you could guide me with. We're always there for you.
And Matt, before you go away, as a follow-up to last night's Town Hall, can you just comment to the audience about what you anticipate will be the rebound process in the future?
Yeah, the rebound process right now, we're working with the administration and dealing with the council as well to secure the firm as a informant. The process will be ongoing for this upcoming, through the 2013 year. For the 2014 tax year, the values will be as of October 1st, '13, and that's the process we're going through now. It's probably, it's roughly a nine, nine to 12-month process.
All right. Matt, thank you very much for your comments and your thoughts. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we have Maquana Best, Deputy Director of Planning. Maquana?
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. As it stated, my name is Maquana Best. I'm the Deputy Director for Planning and Economic Development. The Planning Department includes the Buildings and Inspections, Code Enforcement, Rent Management, Planning and zoning boards. We work very closely with the housing developers and businesses in town. Most recently, the Planning Department received a grant in the amount of $250,000 for the Transportation, Community, and System Preservation Program, and this will establish safe pedestrian and bicycle pathways across 280 freeway drives and also along Main Street. We've also received $90,000 of a $5 million grant to investigate rail stations and improve connectivity between pedestrians, mass transit services, and shopping centers. We also have finalized plans with L&amp;E Development Group for the South Essex Avenue Urban Renewal Project, which will include 64 market and moderate income residential units, as well as 10,000 square feet of commercial space. We also continue to work with the developers, and one of our goals is to get home ownership. And we had a meeting earlier today in Trenton with the Department of Community Affairs, along with other, to the other developers, where we're trying to, they are going to have for-sale units, and I think that will be a great thing, it will be a positive impact to the city. to the citizens of the community, as we're trying to build Orange moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Maquana, very much. And next, ladies and gentlemen, a gentleman who is critical to the city of Orange, Adrian Matt, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Adrian Matt, and I am the Director of Finance as well as a qualified personal agent. And as the Director of Finance, I have responsibility for the finances of the city of Orange. And the parts of finance that we pour into me are the accounting office, which is headed by our CFO, John Scappy, who's sitting in the audience. We also have Matt, who you just heard from, the Taxation Center. We have Mr. Carl Smith, who is our tax collector, and we have our manager, Pero, who is Tanyo Whitby, who makes sure that everyone gets paid on a voluntary basis. The financial integrity of any organization is one of the most important things to an organization. Without that, the organization is likely to fail. And so, we have been working very hard at putting the proper controls in place so that we can make sure that the finances of the city are strong, that there's integrity, and that we could trust the financial results of the city of Orange at the end of the day and the end of the year. And so, with that in mind, there are certain things that we have already put in place. One of the things that was happening on our ride is that employees were able to go out and purchase just about anything without following the proper process. And if in New Jersey, there's a term referred to as a conforming order. And what that simply means is that you are not allowed to make purchases and then come after the fact to get permission to make that purchase. You can't put the cart before the horse. And that has been happening in Orange for probably an empty number of years. And so, we have worked with every department today, and we've put a control in place to stop that happening, to stop the bleeding, and to protect against over expenditures, which is a cost, if it occurs, that would have to be passed on to the taxpayers of the city of Orange. We've also standardized the way we receive money within Orange so that we have better controls and they can be better accounting for revenues that flow into the city of Orange. We've provided training to employees so that they can better and more effectively and efficiently use the new financial reporting system that was put in place at the beginning of the year. We've also added all of our funds to the general ledger so that we could have a fully maintained general ledger so that all funds are properly accounted for. So we are very big on controls. We take it very seriously because we know how important controls are. Another thing that I heard upon arriving here in Orange is that the council have been asking for reports, financial status reports, for a very long time, they have never been able to get any reports. We have fixed that. The council now receives on a monthly basis financial status reports so that they could take a look at the financial condition of the city of Orange. At the end of every year, there is an audit done of the finances of the city of Orange. And where there are deficiencies, the auditor makes recommendations and a corrective action plan is required. It has been prepared by the Chief Financial Officer. I've been told that that has not been happened. We have made sure this year that we have addressed all of the findings of the audit, and we have put a plan in place to make sure that over time, we eliminate those comments. It is a process, it's not a thing, it's not going to happen overnight, but when we look back over the past four or five years, there have been, had managed fifty audit comments. While we're going to bring that down to the minimum, our goal is to eliminate audit comments, and we'll be working very hard on doing so over the course of the next year. We've also created what are known as warning trends. It is important to have trends and to do trend analysis. You have to look back to see where you were, and you have to use history as a tool to plan and move forward. And so, we've created these financial warning trends that will be and can be used to help us better manage the finances of the city of Orange. I believe in a participative style of management, and I believe in listening to those who fall under my charge. And so, we have created this in finance, a professional, warm, inviting working environment, and we do balance it with everyone who employs this in finance. And so, these little things, however, how big they may seem, that contribute to moving Orange forward, and will continue in that direction.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matt. Next gentleman who heads up a very important department in keeping the streets clean and and making sure garbage is picked up, the Director of Public Works and Planning, Mr. Marty Mays.
Marty Mays, good evening, everybody. Actually, I just want to note that I oversee two departments in the city, the planning and development, and also the public works department. And we're very proud of the accomplishments that we were able to make today. On the public work side, one of the things that we've done is come in and take a look at all the capital projects in the city, meaning your roads or your sidewalk projects or any projects, such as that, for example, right now, if you ride down South Center Street, you'll see that we have your current paving, South Center Street, the road surface as well as the sidewalks. And that's just one of the projects that was in the pipeline when we came. And the good thing about it was, you know, a lot of these projects have deadlines, and we're able to come in, review all the files, and make sure that these projects proceed in a timely manner and that they're on pace to be completed. Also, you know, Public Works Department, we deal with anything with trash, cleaning streets and so forth and so on. And one of the things that I'm proud of is that we actually installed cameras, one of the first things we did was install cameras in the public works garage in an effort to make the employees more accountable. And I think that was a positive move. And then also, one of the things that I stress was that, the public works garage that we maintain that, how can we keep the city clean when the public garage is a mess and you got guys throwing stuff, not putting things in the trash down there? So we have an effort underway now to actually keep the garage clean. I think that will, that will partly make the city look better as well. Also, as mentioned, I'm correct, I oversee the planning department. There are so many exciting things happening in the planning department. I guess the main one, which we talked about last night, in last night's forum, and then mentioned here as well, is the projects, the housing development projects that are in the pipeline now, will begin to focus on market rehousing, which is a big shift for the city. And, you know, that's primarily being done in an effort to create a market, create a better Main Street, create a better business climate. So there's a lot of positive things happening in those regards. And also, I just want to mention that tonight, we got a little bit of snow. Snow falls on the purview of public works. We did saw most of the hills today, and I saw a couple trucks out there before I came in, so I'm the guy responsible for the snow removal. And I said that last night, so I'm the guy, hopefully we won't be done with that. We're trying to revamp our snow emergency plan. We've had several meetings, and we looked at some other towns and what other towns do. So hopefully, we'll be a lot more prepared in that day this year for this snow season as we go forward. One of the other things that you'll see, we'll be able to do a better job at is actually dealing with the signage, the signs that you see out in your neighborhoods, the striping of the sidewalks, repainting all the roads. We just got so many things going on, and, you know, I'm happy to be a part of the mayor's team in trying to move Orange forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mays. And we'll be sticking on public works, and your deputy is present.
You needn't anyone apologize on my behalf towards you. As my director mentioned, we are aggressively under this administration seeking fronts, not only to do South Center Street, but to do entirely city, whether it be do mining or any other, like just do grant writing and so forth. Not only are we doing that, but we are in the hands, and communication with other cities and also the county, as well as doing a snow removal plan, and seeking other services to provide the greatest service to the citizens for Orange. Thank you for having me, Matt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mays. And last, and certainly not least, is the person who protects the city legally. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Dan Smith, City Attorney.
Mr. Lincoln once said, "A house of violence cannot stand." I'm Dan Smith, and I serve as the City Attorney. Our duty and responsibilities and assignment is giving advice and research to the administration, to the council, to interface with every person on the stage, to interface with the council, and most importantly, to interface with you, the public. As you know, our door is always open, and people are always welcome to come in and ask questions about the law as it pertains to their individual circumstances here within the city. When we started out, there were numerous politically inspired lawsuits. We have been successful to resolve practically all of them at this point. And what does that do for you? It improves the morale and the efficacy of various departments that serve. One of the great achievements, I think, that we have accomplished has to do with the reservoir. The reservoir, while it was used usually by the seniors for the senior annual picnic, we have been successful in striking a deal with the county to improve the reservoir so that the citizens of Orange and their children have a right to use that property either free or deeply discounted. The terms that we struck with the county were very favorable to the city of Orange, and it's something that I think the community will appreciate for years to come. The city's law department, as I said, is always open. We handle a plethora of issues, whether it's an open request, or if you want to see a public document, or whether it's assisting, the tax collector, removing properties, abandoned properties, or putting them back on tax rolls, and taking the crime residents out of those properties. We handle everything that's legal that comes under the sun as it pertains to the city. We have a staff of four attorneys in the office of City Hall, and we have two prosecutors. So we aggressively pursue all cases as they pertain to the city of Orange, and most importantly, to you, the client. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan. So ladies and gentlemen, now we turn to you, and we ask that you engage the mayor and his staff and cabinet. And so, who will come forward first to begin that process? Anybody have their question? There's gathering on it, some question. Okay, I see one person. Are you coming forward now? Okay, good. When you get to the mic there, you can kind of tell us your name and your address quickly for shit. Thank you.
My name is Oliver Thompson, I'm from Little Stairs, 205. Um, my question, my question is to, you know, you're right, I'm a woman, but I'm a lady. Where are people having a senior citizen building that they have in, in the stone? Not the senior, not that the senior citizens are on Oakwood Avenue, that's in Orange, that they go downstairs to one of their rooms and have different affairs, but a place that they can go separate and apart out of their building and have a senior citizen activity, a place to go. So I'm curious about senior citizens, they having a place to go? I'm curious about my children, because I have friends that are in my play of South Orange or whatever, and in the summertime, they have created not just activities of play, pleasure, learning, various things that they can do during the summer. Because I, because of this work, remember, we used to go to the park across the street and exercise, or they could just play, and now they brought it back inside the school. But I'm interested in something very creative. I'm looking, I'm clear, they have the drama classes and different educational activities with children during the summer. That's very important. We pay a lot of taxes, and I'd love to have our children having some creative activities during the summer. So that's two things. And, but, and if I'm like, I'd like to back here, I'm just top of my head. My street is very crappy. There's a church on the street, there's a lot of broken walls. I would love that street to be a one-way street. How do I feel about that? So I'll just leave you.
All right, so those are three very important questions. Would you like to answer, or Mr. Mayor, would you like to respond?
Yes, there, you pointed to three issues that are very important issues. We're going to let the Deputy Business Administrator speak to the establishment of the Senior Citizen Center, and I'd like to refer the issue of the activities for children and seniors to Adrian Wood, who handles that area. But I do want to talk about what's happening with the children in terms of the extended day program that we're having, that we're modeling, the debate team, the mayor circle of excellence that's going to happen. Just unveiled the mayor for a day where high school kids get to be the actual mayor for the entire day, and then use legislation in front of council. I want to give Adrian Wood the details of various programs that are there. There's more to just basketball and athletic programs, there are cultural improvements in Michigan, education, programs, everything as well. First, I'd like the Deputy Business Administrator to speak to the senior citizens.
Thank you, Eric. To your question as it relates to the senior citizen services, one of the things that they're doing in terms of establishing programs that reaches not just in senior citizen buildings, but to private senior citizen homes, is a host of things. One is partnership with our neighboring cities. By partnering with neighboring cities that are actively engaged, it reduces our costs but still offers an opportunity for our residents to take advantage of the many multitude of services that exist out there. So we're also working with the county, we're working with the state, we've met with the township of West Orange, the township of South Orange, and also some of the administrators in Millburn, with a whole host of issues relative around senior services. One of the other great things that we're in the process of establishing, we've been working diligently with your Councilman Hassan Du Rashid, is the establishment of a handyman program. And that handyman program would provide an opportunity for senior citizens who are in their homes, who are looking for that extra assistance, where sometimes it's just a matter of them just sort of speaking to someone that's from the city that can sort of evaluate or maybe take care of an issue, and that's being funded in part by private donations and outside corporations who are coming in to offer a personnel. We go in, if you need to change a sink, the person would fix that for you. If you need to change a light switch, some of those small costs that a lot of contractors charge an enormous amount of money for, this handyman program would enable that. As it speaks towards the partnership program with the extended day program, I want to turn the mic over to... turn the mic over to our Deputy Director, Andrew Wu. But I will just kind of use as a caveat to say, we're working diligently towards programs. The key is not just lock up all our units, but offer the opportunities all year round. One of the things that I'm forefront of doing that is developing partnerships with our interlocal agencies that include the Board of Education, the Councilman for the West Ward has been an ardent advocate of the establishment of a midnight basketball to get young people off and have programs that also speak to educational enrichment opportunities. So I'm going to take this time and pass it on. Ms. Wu.
Hi. That was a very good question and a very good question for me to answer. I do have a seven-year-old in my house, so recreation is very important and not so much recreation as education. Right now, what we're doing is we have come up with an extended day program which is going to be through the winter months. It is going to start kickoff in January and we have lots of programs that students are going to be able to participate in. Summer programs such as a debate team, a drill team. There's going to be a pre-college advanced unit course, which is going to teach you the strategies of how to take the SATs or the PSATs. But not only the strategies, it's going to be able to teach you if you're lacking in some basic skills, we're going to give you the basic skills that you need to pass the test. Because if you don't have the basic skills or you're weak in the basic skills, I don't care how many strategies I teach you, you're not going to do well on that test. So we're encompassing that and to that extended day program. We're also going to do for recreation and for fitness, we're going to do a Zumba fitness program. This program is where the parent can come in with the child and they can exercise with the child. You know, at Zumba, you see the TV commercials where it's real high impact, but it's not that. You go to your speed and to your ability. For me, for instance, I'm not going to be the one that's real fast, I'm going to be taking it slow, but you may, there may be someone who can speed through the Zumba class. So we're going to be doing that. In this, during the summer months, we've looked at the summer programs and we also want to incorporate some education into those programs as well. So we may be carrying on the debate team. We may have a drama club where you're taught classical plays. We may be doing some Shakespeare. We may have some basic skills in language and math. So those are some of the things that we're doing with the recreation program.
Well, thank you very much.
And then, Mr. Pick, there was an issue about how you have a street turned into a one-layer. And I know this is a petition process that they have to begin, just refer it to the City Attorney.
All right, thank you very much. So after this is over, make contact with Mr. Smith about your one-way street issue. I've got more questions, ladies and gentlemen. Sir, if you could kind of come to the mic, tell us your name and your address and thank you very much for coming out.
Good evening. My name is Joe Sardak.
Joe, would you?
My name is Joe Sardak. I'm living in the place in Orange, in the place in Orange, on, excuse my hands in the pocket. I'm a former housing commissioner and a former member of the housing redevelopment commission. A lot of good things are happening, you see that. A lot of improvement over the old administration. I'd like to answer everybody here. I know most of you, I know some of you, all right? I just want to bring out some, constructive, please take it that way. I heard you talk about communication of her case handling. Well, my telephone led you down. I had no communication. I got a lot of calls before the storm came and after school, nobody reached out to me. I didn't know nothing at all. So please, take a look at that situation. Right now, I'm sitting on my radio and I got a cell phone that's dying on me and I hear, "Well, go to this website for information, go to this website," or, you know, "Hit this," you know, and that's what you're given, you're like, you're stuck. And you guys got to address that.
What would you have liked to have seen?
I, you know, no, you know, I don't like to call myself seeing when I'm sixty. I am disabled, you know, I have disability, you know? But, you know, and I was okay. I did ask the family members checking on me, but there's, you know, there's other people, there's other people out here, for sure, if you business to the house, you know? I think it was okay, but I did not feel sorry for them. And I did have an issue with an neighbor who was bedridden and he was cold and he had Alzheimer's and I had to reach out to OEM. And I'll tell you something, and really, I don't know John Wade, but I'm a little disappointed by his speed, all right? I apologize, I hope it's constructive, you know, but I went, I tried to call OEM, all right? And I had to come in, I went to the police station, all right? And the two gentlemen said, "There's, John's not here, I can't help you." But here's John's phone number, you know, he'll be back in a couple hours. What I did call, John was more concerned about how can I get his phone, than what my problems, you know? So that really upset me, you know? I said, "You know, I live in this town, taxidermy, you're supposed to serve us," you know? So I got a little upset about that, all right? But something that's a little happened, John apologized, but I got a call too.
Bob, just let me just kind of comment real quick on Joe. I will say this, and I know Joe, is that we apologize if we didn't get all the communications out, but I do want to say, and I don't want to make any excuses for anyone, but I will say is that John was working under the most distressed circumstances and at many times, at many times, let me just.
We were distressed too.
And I agree with you, I agree with you, Joe. And like I said, I'm not making any excuses, I'm just simply saying that we're going to try to do better. But I do want to make a comment as it relates towards what we did in terms of communication because we realized a number of residents were without telephone service, without, I'm sorry that I didn't get to your particular block or issue, but what we did have is we worked in collaboration with the police and we had a police officer going around making public service announcements on the loudspeaker and we put out flyers to a number of different places telling them. But again, I apologize if I didn't get to your home and I take that in constructive development and we're going to build on that and I really appreciate your comments.
You know, there was only a huge section, I mean, I drove around Orange today, all right? A lot of the good stuff is still out there, all right? And I was home most of the day and I didn't hear no cops come down the street with announcements. So I think you're a little lucky, all right? As far as I know, everybody's more aware, so are we, okay? And I really am a constructive, a smart constructive, all right? And, you know, I love a couple of words, boy, you know, I love it, all right? But I still got leaves up there that smell my street now, you know? And I know that happens every year, but I hope, you know, one day, Mr. Mayor, you promise my street, I remember, I'm going to keep this place clean, you know? And basically, this is it. I got in and this is it, you know? So I really hope you get that addressed. I do want to say something, I said to you a couple weeks ago, Mr. Mayor, I just want you, the directors here to beware of things going on. You all look to make one here, okay? And as a former housing commissioner, a former member of the Orange Redevelopment Board, I got to make you all aware of something. I mentioned this to the mayor, all right? The Redevelopment Corporation, Orange Housing, is buying houses and houses and asking for pilots and abatements as they're going along and they're putting all this money in their pocket. I'll tell you what's happening. I have a beautiful apartment that I rented, okay? I can't get the money for my apartment that Orange Housing can give Section Eight to pay for that apartment, all right? If I put my apartment up for the price that Orange Housing would pay me to put a Section Eight person in there, all right, three better, okay? On the open market, I can't rent my apartment for that much money. Yet, they're asking for abatements and pilots. I have to take less money. I have to wait six months every time I have to rent it, all right? And I got to pay full taxes. It's something you guys have to address, all right? Because what housing still, the problem with the city isn't, all right? The last I heard, the problem with the city here is, all right, there are people choosing to put these houses and there's very, this is a city mostly made of black people and there's very few black people in those houses. As the last I heard, there was none, all right? This is something that we all have to address. So they come to you, say, "Give me a vacant, give me a pilot," but I look twice, three times, all right? Basically, I'm very pleased with the transition. I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing. And like I said, everything I said is constructive and you're left with us.
Listen, we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Joe, thank you very much. I'd also like to, if you would, just touch base with my office. I think we're going to have a deep reading session regarding standing and what you've done. Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you for your comments. Next, ma'am, if you could be kind enough to give us your name and your address. I greatly appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Hobart. I live on Jackson Street in Orange. And I've been a resident for over thirty years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your concern about seniors because my concern with that was that only those that are in senior housing get communication and those in private homes I was kind of taken back that there wasn't a lot of people here tonight and I think it's because there's no publication going on. It's not enough because my neighbors, they don't know. If I don't tell them something, they don't know what's going on in Orange. Everybody doesn't read the transcript or the town tour. So we need to have more publication or communication with residents. Mr. May, thank you for addressing about the streets and I hope Jackson Street is on your list because when they built the school in 2008, and I bought it before the council before, they damaged my sidewalk with me and two other houses. And I can't get anybody to be responsible for having it fixed. I have paperwork here that shows players in there and we just need to have it fixed. You've got a new school and attacking sidewalk. I mean, if someone falls, then it becomes my responsibility.
Can I make a suggestion, ma'am?
Yes.
After this meeting, if you would be kind enough to see Mr. Smith, he's the City Attorney, and he can talk to you about what your rights are and what liability exists for the city of Orange.
Okay.
Engage in a dialogue on that, okay?
Okay. And last, but not least, have you found a developer for Orange Memorial Hospital?
Orange Memorial Hospital is, has, there has not been one developer designated, but there have been a number of developers and the ideas range from high-end housing all the way to retail stores such as a Target or Walmart. I've had a call for a mayor's committee on development, so we have residents, business people, your councilmen would be involved as well in terms of how we want that site to look and to look at the various proposals that we're getting to find out which one we want. The one thing we know has come in all of it is that it's going to increase our tax rate. It's going to increase our tax revenue to hopefully offset what the homeowners are going to get. But the projects and the site is very desirable to developers. They come to my office, give you various ideas. I want to put them all on the table before our management to find out how we should look, what the impact will be on the schools, what the impact will be on traffic, before we make a final decision. Some of them want to rush to judgment, they want to put us big in the ground tomorrow. But I think we need to take a different approach because we have, the last time we had a project, we were very close to fruition and they found out that our sewer system couldn't handle the load. We've gone through that process, refurbished it. I've had our engineers look at every other facet of the project to make sure that we could accommodate anything from the high house all the way to retail. We can. So now it's time to start to vet the proposals that are coming. But you'll be certainly involved and informed as to what is happening. I've spoken to our communications director about how we inform people of various events. You'll find, as this budget year opens up, you're going to find from January forward, there's going to be a lot of public activities, whereas information sessions, sessions like this, we're going to do more of and we'll do much improved job in terms of informing people so that they have access to it, they give their communication, so they will want to hear.
All right, thank you very much, ma'am, for your comments and your thoughts. Any additional comments from the audience? If you'd be kind enough.
Oh, no. I'll be brief.
Say your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Whitson. I'm at 460 Way of New Place and I've been a West Ward resident twenty-six years. I'm also here as a county committee person representing my district and also as an employee, a missing employee of City Hall. So it's very interesting seeing from inside how, how issues are being addressed and I'd like to thank you all for everything that I have, that I've heard here so far. But I'd like to ask some questions, some of my neighbors have asked me to ask, and that is on the tax, on the tax issue. Will there be a citywide reevaluation for everyone or should they try to get their property taxes down one at a time individually?
Well, in reference to the municipal wide revaluation, it's for the 2014 tax year. We are entering the 2013 tax year. If a citizen does feel that their assessment is high, they have the right to appeal it to the县计委的 taxation by April 1st. But the reason that the rebalance unfair equitable assessments and to eliminate the need for everybody, that some people can't take appeals or don't have the efforts to take it or, and if they miss that April 1st deadline, there's no relief in sight, but the municipal revaluation will be fair equity around. But any questions as far as with appeals, certainly contact my office.
Thank you.
Anything else, I could just add about the process. We've selected a vendor that they can do the job of doing the assessment, but that process takes time actually. The vendors who go out with the plan is, and you're going over the assessment now with your plans going forward, that we presented to council. There was a vendor hit before, but the council was not satisfied with the way they handled their customer service and the thoroughness of their inspection so together.
Yeah, I was around when they did it and as a matter of fact, they didn't even come to some of the neighbors' houses and go throughout. And even though they did come to mine, they had things on the form that weren't true, like I have finished basement and I did.
Well, those are the kind of issues that we wanted to address and have another vendor with a fresh look that will do more for you.
Thank you very much. Is it through?
No, I just had, yeah. I have two more questions.
Take your time.
Also, Highland Avenue train station. I know that there's talk about making that, you know, opening it up and making it direct right into New York, which would encourage more transit, more traffic. At the same time, you might want to look at the crime that's going on there now because I take the train personally to the city and if I come home at night and it's not during rush hour, I'm afraid to walk one block home. And I'm wondering if something could be done where there is some more police activity at that train station.
I just want to comment on that, that we have had several conversations with New Jersey Transit. The police director has met with New Jersey Transit and there's collaborations that didn't exist before, which are now being partnered with this administration. I'll let Director Sims speak more to that. But I wanted to also talk about what's happening in Highland. We're very excited about the possibilities of the expansion of Highland, providing a one-stop to New York City as a Midtown Direct. But we've also been in partnership with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey and the collaboration of some private individuals to establish a Giddy Service that can also be available to get people to and from their doors to where we can reduce the possibility of overcrowding in terms of parking. So those are some of the great things that are happening and I'll just let Director Sims talk some of the, please answer.
That sounds wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The Highland Avenue train station has been issued allowance. One thing that we have increased is the presence. They say usually you come home from the city or, well, what we will probably start to do is look at the heavy traffic hours coming from that train station. And as I mentioned earlier, we discussed, I discussed direct patrols where they're partnering with, will you also actually be there in the vehicle?
Absolutely.
That's something we'll do, but we also have to check more with New Jersey Transit Police who need to assist them with that.
Right.
The rail is there, is their problem.
They're there for parking, but they're not there to, as you said.
That has been an ongoing issue. If there was an incident there, they would want us to take the report with it. In fact, should we something in there?
And as I mentioned earlier, we discussed, I discussed director patrols where the department works. Will you also actually be there in the under vehicle?
Absolutely.
That's something we'll do. But we also have to check more with New Jersey Transit Police, who need to assist them with that.
Right.
The rail is there, is their problem.
They're there for parking, but they're not there to, as you said.
That has been an ongoing issue. If there was an incident there, they would want us to take the report with them. In fact, should we summon them? So we will be interested with partner walks and make that consistent with the heavy traffic times.
Yeah.
But we also are considering partnering with transit and putting cameras in the areas of both of transportation.
Right.
And that would add to security of riders and people.
Yeah, because when you get off the train coming from the city, there's no one there. If your kid's hanging out, just waiting to see who gets off. I might ride to South Orange, I'm afraid.
No, we won't have to ride. We want you to be sitting in Orange, and we'll ensure that that is the case in the very future.
Okay. And I'll ask one more question, and this is for Marty. Marty, I live on Highway eighty place, which is on a hill. And I have no choice but to go down to stop on the road. So I have to have saw and plow. So that's one issue when it snows or ices like today. Also, we need paving. They can't plow because the street has a hunger. So I was wondering if we can get on the list for paving, and then also assure that it's plowed.
Yes, we are definitely going to take those hills into account. Like I said, today, the dawn set and it snowed. The only thing that I saw that primarily were those hills, because they are a major concern. Ray, if you want to get up and speak to that?
And I apologize for my back. Uh, yes, the primary concern is the hills, first of all, and your block specifically was insulted. One of the first consulted. Yes. And one of the concerns is department, so it makes it very difficult for us to find since it's a side of bringing a smaller truck. That takes some time, so outside of that, we will be addressing the issue. And I felt that you've got other works as the digits for most other departments. And that some of our concerns is with police fire and so forth when the snows arrives.
All right, John, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, if you'd come up?
Thank you for your presence. And I want to, I want to be curative, because I know work with a nonprofit, the work that you do. But the other part is missing, and I guess I'm reminded not directing our community services person to sit down with you, and there needs to be some collaboration from, there are some nonprofits that we work with, some we don't, but there needs to be an assessment of resources that are key right now, such as yours, that we need to work with to benefit all our children. Director Warren, next to you, is former lady of the P A L program, the Police Department, there's the Junior Fire Fighters Academy. It's armed for with a number of initiatives they're doing with children. Of course, the Community Services Department has recreation under that belt as well. But that's something that needs to be coordinated. And I think we're missing a whole grasp of youth that could be serviced by your program and other that operate that myself, as a head of this administration, has not put together the kind of assessment and audit of the resources that are on there. And basically, just a suggestion, we're going to do that going forward. I also want the deputy business administrator to speak to the library department initiative that you just brought about, and about some of the grant opportunities that are going on now based on relationships with New York Transit. They're looking to move in libraries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to also talk about something I'm very excited about. What we're doing with the sister agencies in the library main line is we're working with the library to sort of take on some of their expenses, such as their makings and some of their payroll. We've already assumed those responsibilities. By doing so, it reduces the cost for the library, enables them to put more capital improvement back into the building. We have grants, and we have engineers who've come on board, private developers, who've come on board to make Orange Library a staple in our community and a resource center. Something I'm very excited about in this administration is something that you're going to see going forward. It's called the Recreation Plus Program. We haven't unveiled it yet. But the Recreation Plus Program, just to speak about it briefly, is a program that's actually going to provide residents of Orange the opportunity to cross-utilize services such as the library. And then you can use that same card by going up and getting discounts and local merchants. But you can also use that same card for swimming during the summer, the midnight basketball program. But what we're trying to do is try to show that Orange has a wealth of talent and opportunities through collaborations and private, public partnerships. And with the Recreation Plus Program, by offering this to residents, we expand our outreach. So that's something that we're really excited about. We want to use the reservoir as one of the opportunities for them to get their fishing license. It'll all be options on the Recreation Plus Program offered to Orange residents. We've also spoken to the city of East Orange. They have a golf, you know, short hills, to offer our children non-traditional opportunities to exercise and to sharpen their abilities to be competitive moving forward.
Thank you very much. And one of the things I like about living in Orange is because it's really small. But I also personally love to walk. I'm always walking. My husband and I walk. I've walked every privilege in form of Orange. And what I see, and I also make comparisons between. And just so you know, I'm a healthcare professional. I have a master's in public health as well. And, you know, so health and all of that stuff is a big concern, a big concern to me. And as I walk around the city and compare it with, for example, East Orange, I am really disappointed with the cleanliness of Orange. So I guess my point is, what are you doing, I mean, going to be doing to ensure, hold, like homeowners responsible for maintaining the cleanliness of their properties? Because, you know, I, I have a beautiful home, but sometimes when you look on the streets, I mean, I know some people, it's because we have so much more people are renting rather than owning their own homes, and that can be a contributing factor. But, you know, we have to come up with a plan to make sure it's clean, because when we compare it with other cities, it's really disgraceful to the point where I am not happy to tell people where I live, because I really don't want them to visit my city because it's really, really embarrassing. So I guess that's really my biggest concerns. And I'm hoping that with this mayor that we have, we'll begin to see some changes for the better, because I really would like to stay Orange. I was so disheartened to the point where my husband and I began looking someplace else to purchase another home, even if we have to, you know, stand the loss of carrying two mortgages just because we could not deal with that anymore. So please, if there's anything, if I have to go, if I remember, William came up with this plan to have a day where we clean Orange up. And I put work off, and we suited ourselves up, and we came out, and we went over to where we were supposed to meet. And when we got there, there was no one there. And it was really disappointing. And I'm saying, this is how much we care about our city, that we took the time off, I'm a registered nurse, I took the time off to be there, and there was no one there, you know. So we have to do better. So, and if you check the records, I'll read New York's complaints to the city in this regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for your comment. And the Orange League there, I'm going to take that as a suggestion that we should take on throughout the year. That's a program that I'm going to implement. The other part is inspections, and our labor force in the inspection department probably numbers about two or three. But that's no excuse, because when we saw that, and we saw bus driving constraints, we began to put together a program whereby people who vote courts and can't pay their fines or delinquent or some other penalty that they receive, that we can use that policy at stores, like the county does, for people to clean our streets that are under way now. That's going to supplement what we are doing in public works. As far as reporting is concerned, I want Director Wendy Sykes to address that issue, because we put together a task force that includes fire, police, public works, inspection department, health department, that goes out and really focuses on an area and makes sure the area gets cleaned up. And then I'm going to tell you the secret, that if there are chronic problems that you have, and you call the mayor's office and give the address, immediate action. We'll take that. Probably get Wendy's.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Robinson. Thank you for your question. Um, Mayor pretty much summed up what the task force consists of. Um, it has been implemented, and I did mention it earlier. I oversee the task force. We go out and target abandoned buildings to make sure that we try and bring up the code, finding the landlords. Um, we do this on a monthly basis. We do it aggressively in various wards. We started with the east ward. We're actually going out tomorrow in your ward, in the west ward. Um, if you would see me after this forum, and you have some suggested properties, we want to have you place it on our list so that we can go through and try to, and clean up the city of Orange, at least the appearances of the abandoned buildings. Thank you.
All right. Are there any, we'll take one more question, or two more? Do you have a question? All right, we'll take two more questions, and then we'll line them up.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Okay.
Just want to say we've got a great job.
Thank you.
Oh, my name is Tom Wilson. I work for the Rutherford Jesus Center Church. I live on five, seven, sixth line of the street. God, we're going to commit this down, pray for the guy later. And I appreciate that you do. The only thing that I have to find out is, Edward Willis? Whoops. When can I get on your couch? Because I know you're a very busy man.
Sir, I take you all appointments on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And if you contact my office, my telephone number is nine seven three two six six four zero one zero. I'll be happy to meet you.
Okay. I have my information, you got your office. You can keep it.
I'll make sure I run into it, so please, just fill it in.
You got it. You got it, John. In minutes. I can carry you to the city, back before you go.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you very much. This will be the last comment and question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a man. It's a good evening to you, state records and directors. First time I get a chance to meet anybody, essentially. Been waiting for the dream team to get assembled so I can actually see anybody. But they, Harold Johnson, two thirty five, Fort Worth, West Ward. I don't have a question, but I just wanted to share some of my feelings for being in West Ward. One of the citizens of West Ward, also a resident taxpayer. I think the city needs to really think really big. We need some visionaries, not only on our council, but we need some visionaries in the directorship to think out the box, the regular mundane things that City Hall thinks about on a record basis. We are in a situation in Orange where we need some creative bonds, some spiritual bonds, some people that are willing to knuckle down and lead this town. And you will probably get pockets of people, pockets of civic folks, coming following you to do more in the town when they see that type of leadership. Because we've bombarded so much in the press with negatives, you know, of the violence, and we, as taxpayers, feel the negative every quarter when we have to pay taxes and those type of things, and people are wrestling with jobs and economy and things. So it's, you know, every day we get up and we have to deal with the negative. So one of the things that I think that the city definitely needs, and that the whole in all, is this issue of transparency. We're here all the time from one administration to the next, but it seems as though we have these pockets where transparency digresses, where we don't have our website, and we don't have the video of the council meeting. There's a breakdown in the transition of this transparency that everybody talks about, the promises. That really, that's really important to people, especially to my neighbors in West Ward. It's really important that we know what's going on. And another thing, you as administrators and directors, I think if you look into a way where you get more input from the citizens and not treat the citizens as the third leg in the deal, of course, you've got your administration, and your directors, and you've got your council. It seems as though the citizens are always put off, either on their ideas or what they can bring to the plate. It's all we are is a book. And I think the citizens are crying out for it. We have talents to reward it as a book. Uh, redevelopment, redevelopment to me is the immediate community that I live in and they're wrestling with trying to keep our properties up and trying to get our street repaid, trying to pay our taxes, and trying to work within the administration to see a better home. That to me is more important than whether or not the hospital is being developed. You follow what I'm saying? But there's pockets of communities where people really want to do things hands-on, but we just need the administration to address that and support us. And within the resources that you have and the time and fashion that you can give is those people going to knuckle down and do things for themselves with the help of the administration as opposed to not getting our needs or answers addressed. I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. But really, the most important thing for me, one brother, two brothers and sisters, we need you all to step up and think out the box and lead this town.
Thank you very much. There's one more person we cannot close out this meeting without hearing, that's the council from the West Ward. And how are you, Senator?
I'm great. Thank you. I have to sit down. I have a bad knee. My corporate brother begs my pardon. Good evening. My name is Hassan, New York City, two five nine, Los Terrace. Uh, you know, just for the record, twenty-nine years only in the West Ward taxpayer who much like a lot of folks in the city of Orange. First of all, I want to thank this administration for having these town hall meetings. I think it's unprecedented, and I want to thank you and your administration for that. I've spoken to many of you several times, as you know, you see me in City Hall a lot, so I don't want to bore your thought out. And in the interest of time, I have several questions for several individuals, and I'll just ask my questions and have you respond accordingly. Just a suggestion to Reverend Bryce to think that it's good for the library cards, actually. But I think another format, which that should be expressed with me, the school board monthly meeting, and perhaps you could have a meeting with the superintendent. While I think that that needs to be some of the collaboration, in my humble opinion, with respect to library cards. Uh, to Director Simmons, as you know, I met with you in August and in July when you was the acting director, and you were the director. I've spoken to you several times on the phone. And I just wanted to know briefly, that you just elaborate on the lead and read which you and I talk about, just so they'll know that exactly what that is. I know it sounds simplistic, but I think that that's a visionary, because that's really never been done before. Secondly, through you to Mr. Winabo, the taxes officer. I beg your pardon if I mispronounced your name. I've met with you several times, obviously, with regard to tax issues, but I don't want to bore anybody with that. But could you just elaborate, that I believe that there's an extension that the city was given with respect to the tax review that I got in my councilman's mailbox? Also, to you, to the administration, these questions I've asked at city council meetings, I've asked in the hallway, and so I'm not putting anybody on the spot. I call it like I see it, and I think I have a good communications with the administration. And there, because at the very least, we can agree to disagree. Could you elaborate what you think? And to you, Mr. Matt, as I met with you several times, and I know that sounded duncy, that's the truth. I met with you several times. Could you elaborate on what we'll have the budget hearings? And I know that's a collaboration and a partnership with the council. And if the council is at fault for that not being done or delayed, we need to be held accountable also. Also, through you to the deputy B A, I left a message the other day, and I know this is new, but I would like to speak with you with the historical season problem that we have with the day laborers on Scott and Road and Central Avenue. It started several years ago. It's grown there, and every time previous administrations has tried to deal with that, we've had these constitutional advocacy groups that come in and protect them. So that's not anybody's fault. I think we need to take a look at really looking at that issue and really coming up with some strategies, and perhaps that's something that the administration can also tackle as something consistently. Perhaps look at a new location, do some partnerships with outside agencies. And because it's, it's hard to deal with that issue, unfortunately, it really hasn't been dealt with aggressively, so it's not negative. But perhaps this administration can take a look at that. And it's not just because it's in the West Ward, but it's an eyesore to the whole city. Just very briefly, through you to the administration, you know, I know we have some new developments coming in, but with the recent developer, he was supposed behind several day laborers, and now it looks like he's only behind one. And I hope that we can hold these day laborers accountable, so that they don't say one thing and do another. I know we can't read people mind, and I'll talk to you and the B A privately about this developer. Just moving right along real fast, through you to Mr. Mayes, did you just, I know you said that they're doing some curbing, and I know, you know, this stuff is simplistic, but could you actually let them know that you're talking about street paved from Main Street all the way along South Center? Because that may have went over some folks' head. You just said curbing, so we need to let them know that we're talking about black, small asphalt from Main Street to South Center, so that they can hear that in simplistic terms, so they can understand. Lastly, Mayor, I think it's a good idea. It's unprecedented, in my, my observation, being a twenty-nine-year West Ward citizen, that they've never had a mayor for a day at, at, at the elementary or high school, so I think that's a good initiative. And I think I heard somebody, and I don't want to be premature, it certainly comes from your administration, that you may be doing a mayor for a day as a citizen. And if you are, perhaps you can elaborate that. Again, that's unprecedented. And again, I'm not being critical. I want to work with the administration. And I put citizens first. I put citizens before the administration or anybody. So just like we need visionaries of the administration and of the city council, we need vision, visionaries of citizens also. And we need to want to sincerely work with the administration and the citizens and not have any hidden agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman, for your hit. But I'm going to start at the bottom. The Mayor for a Day program is a collaboration with the Board of Education and nonprofit organization Orange Forward. And it simply will have an application process. The children will write an essay, and they'll identify an issue that they want changed in the city. And whoever is picked to be mayor for a day will be a board member of two people from the administration and two people from the Board of Education. And as we pick the person, they will be mayor for a day. They'll come to work at eight o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday. They will go through each department. They will spend some time with a department head that has their interests. So if a child wants to have an issue addressed regarding public works, and they want to work on that issue, they'll spend more time there. At the end of the day, they'll also go to the council meeting and address the city council. They'll have a proposed piece of legislation that they created and worked with them on, that's presented to the council for a legitimate vote at the end of the day. Their proposal could become a law for the city of Orange. I think this gives us exposure. The key thing that I've found about better school districts is just that their children have been more exposed to things. And this is an opportunity to give our children that very same exposure about their government. The same thing with the Mayor's Circle of Excellence, where they're exposed to a number of professions, and people, and places, and secondary education. We have to start to do that now. Whatever resource that I have as mayor, or you may have a city council, or any department heads have, or a business person has, we should bring those resources to the mayor on behalf of our children. In terms of the day labor issue, I want the deputy district administrator to address that issue. But I'm going to try to go in order of requests that you made. I know your first one was an issue regarding the police. We'll have Mr. Renaldi address the revaluation issue in terms of the extension where before the SS County Taxation Board, they did extend the time for us to have a revaluation, which will be 2014, but we're already working on that as we speak. So I guess Matt just took your place on that issue. The budget submission, I will leave that to Mr. Matt. I'll go one by one, I guess, if that's the best way to do it. How can you say?
Thank you, Councilperson. The meeting break that the council person spoke of, it goes back to the parking lots that I raised earlier. The officers will go to certain areas, residential or commercial area, and actually get out and meet the people in the sector for so many works. It's not just a ride-by wave. I want them to go in and talk to the store owners. If they see residents on the street or working in AR, it doesn't hurt for them to stop and just say hello, get to know the people by name. And when I started the Orange Police Department twenty-three years ago, we were on multi-Post, and I think that was one of the best things in my career, because you didn't have that segregation from the people being in a vehicle only. They got to know you, you got to know them. There was no fear there. It was just a concerted effort between us and the community to make that a better area. So the council person was right, we discussed it, and it is being implemented. One of the captains from Patrol Division that's here has spoken with me about it, and any officer that's on the direct patrol, the parking lots, will be out of your vehicle from time to time, not all the time, but from time to time, and leave the people that they're protecting. And on the issue of the day, well, you have two issues of the day laborers that congregate on Scott and Road, and then the issue with regard to contractors hiring laborers. There are some contracts that went into place prior to my administration that did not include the provision that are required to include, that if you're going to build in the city of Orange, we need you to set forth in writing what your commitment is to build in the city of Orange. And then when they're looking at the bids, and they're looking at points as to which one should score higher than the bid number, that consideration will be used to give you a score. So that if you get five points or higher than local, if you don't set that forth in writing, then you won't get those points. Those are things that we can put into the contracts immediately, that if it's not done, then it can be enforced. Most times, the developers will come, and they'll tell it to you orally, but they won't put it in writing. He will want to have it written and enforced.
In a sense, you wanted to let, one of the developers, I believe, in my humble opinion, is remaining on that, but I don't want to mention any names. I'll talk to you and the B A about that property, because that's the way it is.
That's right, that's right. And as far as the date of the congregate, we're going to have a different date.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and Councilman. There's a plan that's in the works right now to sort of, sort of be one, sensitive to the rights of individuals to congregate and be somewhere who are breaking the laws, and we want to be sensitive to that. But we also want to address the, the vacancy that does exist along that corridor, and be sensitive to the residents, the homeowners, and also to those areas. So what we're working with right now is other outside agencies, other union groups, to look for an appropriate place to have them congregate and have individuals kind of go there in an effort to seek the type of employment. We do discourage a lot of that, simply because there have been a number of incidents that have been reported where individuals have come out, and they've picked up individuals and taken them and have done work, and these individuals have not been paid. But I want to also talk, use this opportunity to talk about the labor pool that the mayor has sort of implemented. And in the labor pool, what we've done is we've reached out, and we're continuing to reach out. And I want to say that to all the individuals who are watching this broadcast, who are here this evening, is we're taking applications so that we have a labor pool, that we can pull on Orange residents and use those residents. Incidents that require the city to use individuals on a day labor basis, such as snowmobbing. The recent hurricane, we used a number of Orange residents, where we took on those individuals, and we paid those individuals a fair wage, where we didn't have to go outside and look for contractors to provide the service. We used residents who were right here in the city of Orange. And that program was inspired and moved by Councilman Elroy Corbin, who also worked diligently with us to make sure that that was happening. We got individuals from Councilman Hassan, who took some of those individuals from the West Ward, and we're going to be using those individuals as we move forward in this season that we're moving towards now. So as we spoke about briefly about the contractor, we're going to, we're going to talk about that offline, but we're going to make sure we hold everything to the fire.
And lastly, Mr. P, I would like to talk to you, I'll just use my midnight, I use my midnight, but I'll talk to you privately about discussing a chance of a new location, and certainly just to share my views on that in terms of current day laborers on Scott and Road and Central Avenue. That's all I'm saying about a new location. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to that. Certainly, if we have like a labor hall, I think it would be really great to do something like that. I'm just going to pass it over as the final comment to Adrian Mann.
Thank you for the question, Councilor Adurashin. I indicated to the deputy clerk that I intended to reach out, to have a conversation with you, so that we can have an understanding as to what was planned on the part of the administration and the finance department in particular, as it relates to the budget process for the upcoming year. It is certainly a miracle to have a budget ready for introduction by the end of January. As to the dates, the clerk and I have tagged at least two conversations, and she's presently drafting some dates to share with members of the governing body, as well as with the administration. These will be prospective dates that will be set in place, where we would likely use those dates for budget periods. And hopefully, those dates will be provided to members of the governing body and to the administration sometime over the next couple of days. But the deputy clerk has been working on putting that in place. And so I assure you that the process of the budget this year will be an improved process, will be one that is better than what you've seen in the past.
Right, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes this town hall gathering in the West Ward. Again, we want to thank all of you for attending and appearing, especially under the weather conditions. I'd like to give the last word and opportunity to our mayor to sum up as well. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Really, thank you, Bob, for coming out this evening. As much as Bob is revered in radio circles, he comes to lowly old me, and he says, "I will help you with this forum." So I really publicly thank you, Bob. And I want to thank all the residents for coming out. This is an important part of our democracy. We need to talk to our government, speak to our government. Sometimes we need to yell at our government, but we need to have your attention, and we certainly need to have your attention as we move Orange forward. Nothing is going to be easy, but we're not looking for an easy job. We're looking to come to you face-to-face to tell you what the problems are and tell you what our proposed solutions are. And if you can do it better, if you can do it faster, if you can do it less extensively, we want to hear from you, because this is a team effort. I want to thank the council members for coming out, because you can't move government without having a city council. I want to thank them for taking the opportunity that we have started to do now, is to start to call the council and say, "Listen, here are the issues that we need to face, and let's talk about them before we bring them out to the public for a vote." It just makes it a better process for voting under many receiving the council meetings, but it makes it more of a smoother process. And I think this administration has to play a big role in terms of turning things over to the council, expressing and discussing, and then coming to some consensus. So I want to thank all of the council that came out today. I certainly want to thank all of the administration coming out. I told them that this is a business that we have to run. They must be professional. They must have the highest standards. And they've all upheld those standards, as we do on a regular basis. This is the second town hall meeting. The first one was in the South Ward. This, of course, we're in the West Ward, but there are two more. Tomorrow is in the East Ward at St. Matthew's Church on Opert Avenue. And then the last one is in the North Ward at the Elps Lodge on Main Street. We encourage you, we encourage your neighbors to come out. If something that you didn't get out today, you're certainly welcome to come to any other town hall meeting. This administration has an open door policy, so if there's someone that you need to see, call, an appointment, we'll get a date, and you can come in and meet. There are no secrets. We have an open government intended to operate under. We thank you all for coming out. Please remain vigilant.
Yes, thank you very much to all the members of the administration. We appreciate it. Let me acknowledge that Councilman Dada-